I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, everyone, help yourself with the pizzas. Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:05. And we'll move on to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Or any public comment? Hearing, no public comment. Excuse me, we'll move to item number four. Approved minutes from the April 2nd, 2019, regular meeting, kept motion to do so. Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-2. And please note Bob and Amory's abstentions. Item number five, approved minutes from the April 10, 2019, special meeting, kept motion to do so.
So move.
Motion by Rob, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-2.
And please note Amory and Bob's abstentions. Okay. Item number six, commendation from the state of Connecticut for Karen Stanek. Representative Claire Zdicha.
Thank you. Can I show you the tissues, please?
Hello?
Oh, yeah.
I can't look on them, I'm sorry.
All right, well, Fred and the Stanek family have received from the General Assembly, be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly extends its sincerest condolences and expression of sympathy to the family of Karen Rae Stanek. On the passing of Karen Rae Stanek, loving wife, mother, sister, and grandmother, her love of her family, community, and her proud roots to the town of Seymour serves as an inspiration for others to follow. Her devoted nature and contributions through her public service as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and with our youth as an educator and as a trusted advisor to the Seymour High School mock trial team were unsurpassed. We will be tru-- she will be truly missed by all that had the pleasure of knowing her. Introduced by myself, my sister, Representative Femas Claritas, Senator Eric Ruffell, and Senator Kevin Potter. Come on up, thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
(inaudible)
Twenty-two weeks ago, thank you for the support and the know-it-knowns with regards to passing Karen. Once again, thank you. And here in the union, looking down at early stages of this legislative competition. I don't know if you've heard of Monta Ellis, who supported Representative Femas Curtis during 1982, 1983, mock trial team against the state championship team in the world. Kennedy was one of the private members that had been with some of the members, one of the lawyers, on the register, or based on the case, several years ago. It's a great project, uh, accomplishment. And again, that's why I can't talk.
That's right. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Fred. Okay, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding hiring of deputy fire marshal. In your packets, you have a packet. There are several letters, so I'll just kind of read through some of them. This is to the Board of Selectmen from Clay Jurgens, who is the chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Says the Board of Fire Commissioners is recommending Robert Rockwell for the position of deputy fire marshal. The committee has forwarded this recommendation to our board, see attached. And then, in the attached, you have a letter to Chairman Jurgens from Fire Marshal Willis, giving some information on Robert Rockwell. And then, a letter from Fire Marshal Willis to myself. And again, just to go through, we actually do not choose the fire marshal or the deputy fire marshals by Connecticut general statute and by town ordinance. We approve the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners. So they essentially sent this to us as a courtesy. But our fire marshal, Tim, is, Tim Wallace is here. Now, Tim, if you want to just talk into the microphone, maybe add anything, and then if you want to introduce Rocky, that would be good, too. Just make sure it's on, so they can...
It's on.
Sounds like it's on.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having me here tonight. The, his resume speaks for himself. Mr. Rockwell is here tonight. This gentleman is taking thirty years of experience to the town of Seymour. I would feel comfortable working for him, let alone having him work in our office together, so we can work as a team. I look forward to what we can do and where we can move in the future. I just, I'm beyond pleased. The, this gentleman's resume doesn't truly speak for his experience, his background, and not only his experience, but his, his experience in community similar to Seymour, where he has dealt with similar issues, as well as he is from the valley and knows the town of Seymour, knows its roads from some of his other past endeavors, so he certainly knows the town, and I look forward to working with him. So...
Yeah, please.
I have over thirty years' experience as a deputy fire marshal, most of it here in the valley. Present day, I work down in New Canaan, where I commute, which is not so nice.[392.12][392.12](laughing) But I've known Tim for a while, and Paul. The fire marshal community in the state of Connecticut is kind of small. We all train together, everyone knows each other, so we've known each other for a while. I grew up in Shelton, and I'm very familiar with the whole valley and Seymour. I'm also a volunteer at the Echo Hoes in Shelton for forty years, still an interior firefighter there. And glad to be here in Seymour. It's a, it's a nice town, and it's near my hometown, and I'm used to the valley. And Canaan, I wasn't so used to.
A little different.
Yeah, just a little different.
A little different. So does anybody have any questions, Mr. Rockwell?
Trust Tim's judgment completely.
Yeah, um, Tim formed the committee himself, Paul Wodowicz, a member of the Board of Fire Commissioners, Board of Fire Chiefs, so it was kind of a real rounded group of people, and I think they made the right decision. So, okay. So now, we'll do the official part, right?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And just, Fire Marshal Willis, you have, I didn't notice, a set start date?
We're anticipating a May 6th start date. That would be the first Monday in May. It allows him some time to notify his current employment, as well as me to prepare for him and his first week, a bit of an orientation.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the Board of Fire Commissioners' recommendation to hire Robert Rockwell for the position of deputy fire marshal, effective May 6th, 2019.
So move.
Motion by Trish, second by Amory. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Welcome aboard, Rock.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Okay, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding 38 Nickel Street Blight Fine. All right, so this will take us back to the fall. If you recall, back in the early part of October, we discussed, discussed, excuse me, this house. This house obviously was not in the best condition. The owner was here, we had some conversations. He had some concerns having to go back, I believe he was from Uruguay?
Ecuador.
Ecuador, Ecuador. So, you know, he had some issues, he had to go back and forth for some family things to take care of. We gave him a timeline to get the house done. In your packets, there is, even though it is a black and white photo, the outside of the house has been completely redone, roof is fixed, windows are done, new siding. You know, the only, I guess, issue is the dumpster that's there, but again, he's still doing work on the inside portion of the house. One of the things we had mentioned was he would have a CO. He does not have a CO as of yet, simply because he hasn't finished the inside. But I think, over the last four or five months, he's definitely met what we had asked of him, to at least have the outside up to snuff and looking nice. So what I'd like to do, and again, Brian, just correct me if I do anything wrong, is just to continue to give him time to keep the Blight Fine frozen as it is, keep it there as the stick, give him the opportunity to obtain his CO in a reasonable amount of time, so maybe we'll revisit this in six weeks again, maybe our first meeting in June, just to see kind of where he, where he stands, and at that point, we can make decisions. But again, we don't, it's not about collecting money, it's about getting these properties rehabbed and on the market. Again, this is not really a flip house. His intention is to live there, remember, he said that, so obviously, he has some incentive as well to get this house up to, up to snuff. So do we have to do anything at this point, Brian?
We have a motion to suspend the Blight Fine temporarily, both of the...
Okay, so that would, that would be June 4th. Okay, so then, I'll enter, uh, I'll enter...
Or is that big, is, is that, is somebody...
Yeah, Rory will reach out to him. Oh, I didn't see you back there. Oh, there you are. Didn't see you back there. So...
Well, how, how much time is more?
So, well, that, well, why don't you come out, we can, we have some, answer some questions.
Good evening, Mr. Rockwell.
Thank you. Well, first, you know what, say thank you for the work that you've done on the outside. I mean, I drove by, it looks great.
I agree.
A good job. And again, the dumpster, obviously, that's just a part of...
No, it's, it's out.
Oh, okay, good.
Yes, last week.
So what do you think the timeframe is for completion of the inside that's...
Well, I had some issues with it. I tried to hire contractors from the town, but it was way too expensive to me. I had my own contractors from New Haven.
Yep.
But now that you guys give me a chance to finish the house, so I say I'm going to hire people from here, but it's way too expensive.
Okay.
So I just hired new guys from Derby. I had issues with electrician and heating guys, but I got my own heating guy from Derby, he's coming tomorrow, and the electrician here is tired, so the permit support's pulling, his purpose pull, pull out today or tomorrow.
Okay.
Because he already looked at the place, so he's on the start with the permits.
So how much time do you think you would need to...
Complete and finish? About two months.
About two months?
Yeah.
So if we set the beginning of July?
Yeah, that would, that would become...
Okay. Does anybody have any issue with beginning of July? No? Yeah, now, if...
I've been, I've been working with the building department, and they know what kind of work we did in there, so he was happy with that.
Okay. So we'll say then July, but if for some reason, you know, you're having issues with that date, you run into things, whatever happens, if you can just keep in communication in my office with Rory, and let us know.
Thank you.
And then, just provide us updates. And again, our goal, like we said, is to get the house back up and running, and you've done what we've asked you to do, so we definitely appreciate that, so we want to give you some more time to get the inside done.
Yeah.
I did a lot of talking last time, so I just really want to commend and thank you for keeping to your word. I, I very much appreciate and respect that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so then, the motion will be to...
Suspend the Blight Fine temporarily.
Are we meeting on July 2nd? Well, I, I expect our meeting is July 2nd. So, all right, so entertain a motion then to suspend the Blight Fines, or to continue to suspend the Blight Fines at 38 Nickel Street, and we will revisit those on July 2nd at our Board of Selectmen meeting.
So move.
Motion by Stefan, second by Trish. Is there any other discussion or comments?
So that, that would be a CO.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, hearing nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Excellent. Item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding noise ordinance. At our last meeting, we had a resident who had some concerns with the noise ordinance, so we had that pulled out, it should have been provided, just for reference. So as with any ordinance, we'll have the ordinance committee start with a review. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen forward to the ordinance committee, the town of Seymour's noise ordinance for review and discussion.
Second.
Motion by Stefan, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding strategic planning ordinance, strategic planning committee ordinance, excuse me. Okay, this was forwarded to myself from the Strategic Planning Committee. They currently have seven members, they'd like to get down to five, and they'd also just like us to review the ordinance to see if there is any need of change. So entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen forward to the ordinance committee for review and discussion, the Strategic Planning Commission ordinance.
So move.
Motion by Stefan, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding surplus equipment auction agreements. Okay, in your packets, and we're going to chunk this out into two parts. First, we're going to have Rory talk about the program itself, and then Brian will talk about the agreement, and then some changes that we would need to consider to our surplus bidding ordinance if we were to move forward with this. So Rory, want to come forward, just give a quick update?
Yeah, so this company actually just sent us a brochure. We just recently got rid of thirteen surplus vehicles. You know, most of them didn't run. Typically, these vehicles began in the police department, and then went to the building department, and then, you know, they've bounced around to three or four departments. We don't have titles for a lot of them. But the process is spelled out in the charter, or I'm sorry, in the ordinances, and it's very time-consuming, especially because they don't have titles. So this company sent us a brochure, we called them, we spoke to them. The idea is, they follow our procedures, we tell them what is surplus, we still go through the same surplusing procedure, and then we hand it over to them, they do the whole thing, and then we get the price that the buyer cited. They don't take any part of that, they tack an additional percentage on top that the buyer pays. The idea is just bringing up resources, we can outsource this with no loss of revenue. Pretty much it.
Again, it's not something that we do often, anyway, but when we do, it's generally a lot of work, as Rory mentioned, so...
One thing I noted is the information that you do give them is the misrepresentation that sometimes gets placed on some of those things that are auctioned. So as much information as you can give them during that time period is important, because I saw a lot of bad reviews for some of the people that bought from them, and it was all due to the fact that they didn't give enough information, so it was misrepresentation. So I don't know if there's anything we need to do to protect ourselves there, but we might want to consider that when we're feeding the information for the auction.
Okay. Rob?
I did notice that in the references, just about everybody was out of New York. Do you know if they're working with any other municipalities in Connecticut, or any other states for that matter?
Um...
Is there a test program in Connecticut?
I would have to check with them. I didn't ask.
Okay, that's something I'd like to know, if any other towns in Connecticut have used them. And you said that we recently did thirteen vehicles? What's the process now? We go through some auction site, or...
Yeah, so it's very similar to the RFP process. It's sealed bids that have to get delivered. Each item has to get bid on, we didn't do it as a lot. So because there were thirteen vehicles without titles, each vehicle, we needed to do a letter, a notarized letter with a bill of sale from the DMV. The vehicles are old, and they're in rough shape, the VIN numbers were off, so we, in what was given to us when we did the bid, it was a lot of back and forth with paperwork.
Who currently does that? When you say "we"...
It's the, it's the...
Me.
Yeah.
You have lost, you have lost tile, I mean, because there was no VIN number, you probably have lost...
The VIN number was on the vehicles, but it was, it was reported to us incorrectly. So we did the notarized letters, we gave it to them, and then they came back and said, "That's not right." Do it over again.
So the big benefit to this is, we're going to be able to do the work without losing any work that we did last.
Correct.
Above...
And is that fee per vehicle?
Yes. It's a, it's a percentage, so...
Yeah.
But you would still have to do the title search and all that, it's just that you're giving them the information, and they're doing posting, marketing, everything else.
This is not for, for property, this is just surplus equipment.
Right.
That's all we're using this for.
Okay.
For, for real estate.
But in the car, you didn't have the title, so you had to go do the title. You would have had to done that regardless.
Uh, we sold it as-is, noting that there was no title.
The owner throws a question.
I mean, we got three, four, $500.
Yeah.
Those were, those were big, for, big money for some of these cars.
One of them was $79.
Yeah. I mean, if we're, if the RFP sealed bid type stuff, it would probably be beneficial.
All right, so any other, any other program-related questions? Again, we're not approving the program tonight, we're just introducing the program. Brian has some things he wants to go through with regards to the ordinance, which we would have to address first before we can go down this road. But again, I want everybody to at least see it, know what was going on.
Did you have one point of contact that someone was, one guy was...
I think it's a pretty small outfit.
Yeah, I think that, did you have...
I spoke with Taylor.
Okay, nothing else for Rory?
Excellent, thank you, Rory. Mr. Leclerc.
In order for the town to go down this road, you would have to amend two of the, one of your ordinance. As you know, for any surplus property, any type of a good old property, you must, you must file, follow, you bid yourself the property, that begins with offering the vehicle to any other department, from your municipal powers, and any equipment that you offer to any, any department of the town, lots of vehicles. You may recall that came up at one of your fires, that's where it was, like, twenty-four months ago exactly then. Following that, you have to have advertised a sealed bid, they must come back to leave for selecting, there has to be a five percent, six, five, seven percent in with each bid. Avoid it unless you have to open a bid, you have to post to the DMV, the board of town, or if you can wait another five weeks. If they're three days later, they have to come and get the property, or you have to look at the board and board, it's one part of time, it's a little bit tough. But you have to rewrite your ordinance, or maybe you put that in, you don't try to even follow that, or go away, some kind of... That would be a silly one for you.
Right.
And Brian, I noticed something being viewed in the paper, there is a division for fees for the auction company, if the buyer pays, if I bid $1,000, I'm owed, that's enough, I may have to pay $1,100 to them, or if it's $150,000, the buyer has to pay, and then they're going to, the auction number, or something like that.
All right, so if, I think the plan will be to move this to the ordinance committee to review.
That's right.
So if you can make some, draft some language, if that would be appropriate. All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen forward to the ordinance committee, ordinance 2-281, the surplus bidding ordinance for review and discussion.
So move.
Oh, boy. Motion by Al, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Rory. Okay, item number 12, appointments, we have one appointment. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments as presented, dated April 16, 2019.
So move.
Motion by Stefan, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Item number 13, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated April 16, 2019, as presented.
So move.
Motion by Amory, second by Stefan. Under discussion, make sure you have no conflicts. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Next item, item number 14, transfers. We have three transfers before us. We're going to start with control number nine, which is money that is, a transfer being requested by Anthony Di Primo, Director of Public Works. The amount requested, $116,947.54. That money will be moving from clerk salary, DPW, $31,952.54; overtime, DPW, excuse me, $7,995; and contingency, DPW, $77,000. And that will, those will be moving as follows. DPW overtime, snow plowing, $32,490.45; and DPW snow plowing materials, $84,457.09; for a total of $116,947.54. So you can see, the detail also included in your packets under separate, because of the size of the information that was provided by Tony Di Primo, as you can imagine, he has every dollar itemized and detailed. It's about thirty pages that he adds for this transfer. This is common, once a year, as you guys remember, we do this. You know, the snow plowing budget is a guess every year, so...
Was it average of the last budget?
I'm sorry?
Were we the average of the last budget?
Um...
This was a pretty mild one, was that a really long, a mild winter?
It was definitely in line with a mild winter. You know, we got hit with a few Sunday storms near the end. Manpower was, was below average, though, compared to material, because there were a lot of times, we had the guys out in the morning when they came in, just putting material down, because the roads were icy, more for the buses and things like that, so the, it was substantially out of whack, material versus overtime. Generally, they're pretty consistent. This year, material was substantially higher than, than overtime, so...
Out of curiosity, why do we use the contingency line item as opposed to just using the snow plowing line items?
Which contingency? The contingency public works? Yeah. Uh, because it's controlled, then. Okay. Because if it's within the department, it's much easier to move. We want to have control, and that way, people can understand exactly how much is being spent. So to move it like this, it needs to come, at first, it goes to the Public Works Board, then to us, then to the Board of Finance. So again, just some extra checks and balances.
Yeah.
Plus, now, if this money is not needed, it falls to the bottom line. If it's, it can't just be used by the department for whatever whim they have.
All right.
And again, the clerk's line, as you know, the clerk retired. We didn't expect her to retire, so we have some extra money in that, so we'll just use that line. Okay, anything else? Okay, so then, I'll entertain a motion, did I redo that? No, I haven't done that.
No.
No motion, right? Okay, so entertain a motion that we approve control number nine, in the amount of $116,947.54, as requested by Anthony Di Primo, Director of Public Works.
So move.
Motion by Amory, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Next would be control number 10, and this is being requested by James Baldwin, Building Compliance Director. The amount of transfers, $46,031.51. We will be moving money as follows. Salary director, town planner, $35,000; social security town planner, $2,925; salary per DM building, $3,272.04; and contingency other, $4,834.47. That'll be moved as follows. Salary director buildings, $25,591.80. Salary clerical buildings, twelve thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Social security buildings, two thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and nine cents. And retirement buildings, four thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Total, forty-six thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. As you know, we changed the structure of that department after the budget had been approved. So we knew that we would have to come back and make this transfer. So we waited as long as we possibly could. So this is just reconfiguring all of that money to its proper positions. Jim has provided some detail and breakdown, so you can see all that. The Board of Finance will review all that just to make sure it's correct. Again, for us, it's, we created the system, so now we have to pay for it, so. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve control number ten in the amount of forty-six thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents as requested by James Baldwin, Baldwin, Building Compliance Director. Motion, I'll give that to Rob, second by Bob. I like that, Rob and Bob, very bipartisan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay, the last one is control number twelve. We are moving the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-two cents. That will be coming out of the Human Resource Director's line and will be moving to three places. Overtime, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars ninety-five cents. Social Security, two thousand two hundred sixteen dollars seventy-four cents. And Retirement, three thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy dollars ninety-two cents. This is to cover additional custodial overtime that we had not planned for. We had some issues, obviously, with the community center, we're starting to talk about a new community center, so they blew that line out. But we knew that this money was gonna be available, so we invested in getting the projects done as opposed to putting it off and causing further damage to the buildings, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve control number twelve in the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-two cents as requested by Anthony Caserta, Director of Operations. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Anything under discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero one. Please note Trish's abstention. Again, these are all forwarded on to the Board of Finance. Okay, item number fifteen is correspondence. We have two correspondents, we have the check register and then we have the Department of Public Works report, again, which came under separate copy because of its size. So if any of you have a free two hours, it'll give you a good read. Next is item number sixteen, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Excuse me, we'll go to item number seventeen, Selectmen's public comments. Come on. Rob?
We'll drive Friday Land Trust, where it feels like we're dropping.
What time?
It is running from one to six.
One to six.
I'm positive, so I have to give one extra rep to this.
Oh, excellent. That was well done. Al?
I'm good.
Al was good. Anne Marie?
I'd just like to, once again, Fred, thank you for everything. And Karen, we will miss her. We all appreciate her. I didn't have the honor of going to Seymour High, but sort of wish I did, just so I could have her as a teacher. But I know my daughter appreciated everything she did for her as well. And thank you Nicole for, for doing that for Karen. I had the honor of also standing in and doing the citations for the Seymour Cheerleaders for their Best in State. It was a great, they're really making a name and putting for themselves as for Seymour. We had a couple of girls that make Allstate as well. And that's about it.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Bob?
No comment.
Oh, I didn't see. Trish?
I am just gonna repeat what I said last month because Fred was not present during Selectmen's comments, but I just want to reiterate how kind Karen, you know, schools, everyone talks about her commitment to her town, but just being a people person and how generous and kind she was to my kids who adored her, even in their severe times of trouble. Big supporter of them and I will never forget that and neither will I. Also, forgive me Kurt, if I totally ignored you, again, during the meeting, but did we talk at all about the Seymour remembers communication that came, that was given to us tonight?
Oh, in that, no, we did not. But thank you for bringing that up. That's in your packets. That is your invitation to the Memorial Day Parade. So if you are going to be on the viewing stand, please let Bev Kennedy know all the contact information is there. Or if you're all gonna be there, let Rory know and he can just let Bev know all in one shot. Whatever's easier for you guys.
And lastly, I saw a lot of Selectmen there as well and I know that they do it a few times a year, but had an opportunity to, again, to go to the Fireman's. Breakfast, it's always a nice turnout, good, good food, so I always appreciate that they do that and in return, able to support them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trish. Rory, anything we missed? That was an odd no. Brian, anything? Okay, with that, I'll entertain-
Make a motion, Karen.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero.